Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the City Council and the Mayor's briefing for May 2nd to order, 2023 to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
President Laflamme.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Tilletson.
Here.
Ziegrowski.
Here.
McAuliffe.
Here.
Lopez. Balakir.
Here.
Crampitz.
Here.
Dobos. Crochain.
Here.
Labrie.
Here.
Pinaya Costello.
Here.
Thank you. Did you get, Councilor Lopez is on. She's on, just so you know. She didn't come through, but she's on, I can see her. Okay.
Thank you.
In compliance with the open meeting law, law, the city of Chickaby is broadcasting live in for future broadcasts this meeting on Chickaby TV. Is anyone else in the audio audience video or audio taping this meeting? Please state your name and reason for doing so. Seeing none, we're going to move it. And also participating on Zoom this evening, we have Councilor Crampitz, Councilor Lopez, Councilor Brooks, Councilor Tilletson. Am I missing any City Councilors? Because there's some phone numbers. Seeing none, we're going to move into the Mayor's briefing. I'll turn it over to Mayor Honorable John View.
Thank you, President Laflamme, and esteemed members of the Chickaby City Council, the viewing audience. I have a number of Mayor's orders that I would like to have you consider this evening, and I'll just jump right into them. The first order is order that the city of Chickaby rescinds the following amounts that had been authorized to be borrowed by which are no longer needed for the purpose for which they were initially approved. The unissued amount is $2 million. The date of the loan order approval was June 25, 2018, and the original purpose was for City Hall renovations. Further, ordered that $290,845.26 of the $4 million previously borrowed by the city to pay a portion of Phase 1 of City Hall renovation project, which is no longer needed to complete, that phase of City Hall renovation project is hereby transferred in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, to pay preliminary expenses of Phase 2 of the City Hall renovation project. And just for clarity, I know there's been a lot of talk today about it. I know the city planner is here as well. I just wanted to share that what the city is trying to do, and again, this is guidance that we've received from our city's financial team, Hilltop Securities, and Peter Frazier, who's been working with Bond Council. That's the Bond Council that we use is Lord and Lock and Lord, Lock and Lord out of Boston. So they actually wrote the language. What we're doing is closing out Phase 1. And the good news is that we were, the City Council had approved authorization for up to 16 million. The city has only used 14 million of that because of the creativity in finding grants for certain parts of this project. But when they did the closeout of, as we approached the end of closeout of Phase 1, and this is the final piece, we found that there, we actually borrowed $290,845 more than what we expected. And since that money's already been borrowed long term, it, and some questions came up is, you know, why is it being put towards Phase 2 of City Hall? Because the only place that we can put it to is where it's been borrowed for that actual intended purpose. You can't return it because it's a long-term borrow. You can't put it in free cash because that would be illegal. So the solution is to find another capital project with a longer useful life or a similar useful life. And the one that Bond Council has approved is the intentions of the city, which were and are to move forward with Phase 2. And it made a lot of sense for them to put the money into that account. So there, like I said, there's no way to return the money. It cannot also be used to pay off the debt service of the money you already borrowed. You cannot do that either. So the wording of this and this combination of how it appears to be two orders is, one, we are rescinding the $2 million because we don't want to borrow it. And again, this closes out Phase 1. I think I really touched on everything I wanted to share. Lee, anything you want to add?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that this is coming up now because my staff has been able to close all the contracts and close all the POs associated with all Phase 1 work. So since Phase 1 is complete and the bond authorization for Phase 1 was very specific to the scope there, we don't need to borrow any more funds. The $290,000, that's surplus in the capital account for Phase 1, was borrowed in the last chunk of money that we needed to support the project. And when we closed out the POs, we had a number of credits and deducts from contractors that flowed back into, to increase that surplus amount. So as the mayor stated, you know, we've been working on the designs for Phase 2. We're hopeful that there will be a Phase 2 of this project. And based on, you know, what this money was originally borrowed for, it made sense for it to be rolled into the account for Phase 2 for use at a future date.
Sure. Any questions about Mayor's Order 1? Sure. Counselor Labrie.
So when I first looked at it, I was confused with the $4 million. So I called our city auditor, Sharon Riley, and I learned that, you know, we didn't use, we authorized 16 million. We borrowed 14, but we borrowed it, we took 10 at one time, and then we took four. And that's how we come to that four here. So if anybody had the same question I did, I didn't know where that 4 million was coming from until I talked to the city auditor today, and she said they did it 10 and four, and then didn't take any of the two that was left.
That's correct. And that was based on our needs to cash flow the project and to only borrow as needed.
Right, right. She explained that to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crochain.
Yeah, just want to thank you for your explanation because on face value, looking at this, and I had talked to our president about it, felt like we'd be forced to vote for two separate line items. But I, we obviously want to rescind the two, but maybe I don't want to do the other. But your explanation, you know, with your transparency was perfect. So now it's very understandable why we have to do what we have to do. But it was kind of confusing just on the, obviously, you can't put everything you said in that, in the order. But, because my recommendation would be to Bond Council to separate things from now on, like we try to do with other departments that lump things together. But I appreciate your transparency and your explanation of it because I'm more comfortable now about voting for this.
Thank you, Counselor Crochain. Sure. Mary Beth, Counselor, Pinaya Costello, sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. Your explanation made sense. It looked confusing in the beginning. I agree with my colleagues. I tried to get ahold of Auditor Riley today, but my phone didn't work right. But this makes sense, and I appreciate, again, what Counselor Crochain said, the transparency that you and your team is doing along with, the planner, Lee Poulia. So I am, I am supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Costello. Counselor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the further explanation. I did call the treasurer this afternoon and looked into it myself. And I feel more comfortable now with getting more pieces of the puzzle together. So thanks for the further edification.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank Treasurer Maria Laflamme for her help and guidance. But the financial team, we meet very frequently, and we met today. And this is, again, a very important order on how to close out Phase 1. And, you know, I always want to, again, thank her and also our Bond Council, actually, our city's financial advisor, Peter Frazier, for helping with the clarity, just so that I can express and make sure that everyone understands what we're actually doing. Sure. Counselor Ziegrowski.
Mr. Mayor, I did get a call from one of the finance people in the city, and I was a little bit confused, like a lot of us were, looking at this packet. But after her explanation, I'm convinced this is the right way to do it. You know, this way, we're not losing out on money. That was the key factor that I liked about it, that we're going to make use of this money now rather than later. So it won't upset the whole train of thought, so to speak.
Thank you.
I support you on this admission.
And if I may, just talk briefly about Phase 2. We have every intention. I'm working with the council moving forward. We're at 40% design engineering right now for Phase 2, and want to make sure that you're informed moving forward as Phase 2 gets closer and closer to finding out actually what the real number is, the cost estimate will say, and, and moving forward with Phase 2, and how we would potentially fund it. So we'll be sharing that with you shortly. And again, plans are available through city planner Lee Poulia. Lee, I want to thank you for all your hard work and your team. I know how passionate you are about City Hall and this amazing project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions about Mayor's Order 1? Mayor's Order 2 is also a part of, again, the closeout, Mayor's appropriation of $7,898.70 to the following named account, planning special account for City Hall, Phase 2 renovations from the available funds, and the planning special account for City Hall Phase 1 renovations. As you can see from the background information, again, this is money that was not encumbered for Phase 1. It's roughly $8,000. And again, that's being transferred to Phase 2.
Yeah, it's very similar, as the mayor stated. This was free, this was free cash that the city appropriated early on in the project of Phase 1, that with our closeout of the projects is surplus in the account. And we're just asking for it to be ruled into the existing Phase 2 account so it can be, continue to be used on this project.
I think any questions about Mayor's Order 2? Thank you for your consideration. Mayor's Order 3. Order that the sum of $75,000 be hereby appropriated to the following named account, police salary account for signing bonus. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the police salary account for patrolman step one. I know that Chief Major is here. Chief Major and I obviously share the same, and I'm sure the City Council and our residency, that how important public safety is. And, and what this is all about is looking at lateral transfers. It's already been in the newspaper. I'll just share quickly. It's pretty substantial how much it costs and a very long time period to train an officer. So we've allocated funds. And again, thank you, Chief Major, for being creative to come up with this lateral transfer idea. I know that other communities throughout the country are doing it. I'm sorry, other police departments across the country are doing it. And Chickaby thought maybe there's the potential to, up to get up to five officers who are well-trained from other departments, who are civil service, who'd be interested in working for what I call the finest police department in Western Mass, if not comparable to that in the whole Commonwealth. So, Chief, anything you want to add?
No, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the compliment, first off. And I think the mayor described it pretty well. What we're looking to do is get some bodies from other departments, basically through lateral transfer that could, I wouldn't say immediate, but very rapidly be put street-ready, rather than having to wait the 22 weeks of the academy and 12 weeks of field training time. The cost to send an officer through the academy, through the field training program, as well as the amount of cost for the academy registration is approximately $35,286. And that still puts us 34 weeks out from having an officer on the street ready to work. The incentives we came up with was based on experience. If an officer has zero to three years of experience in another department, we would offer them $5,000. Three to six years would be $10,000, and over six would be $15,000. So if you look at the math, we're still potentially saving approximately $20,000 and having an officer much more rapidly available to be put on the street to serve the city.
Thank you. Any questions? Vice President Ziegrowski.
Just one question, Chief. I saw the article in the paper, and I, I was impressed the way you went about this. I'm just curious. It's only been a short period of time, but have you had any bites at this yet?
I haven't received it. It opened up as of May 1. I have, have not received any applicants as of yet, but I know that there is talk about it through social media and different avenues.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to add one thought, and I think it's really important to mention to the viewing audience, the public, and to the city council. It was mentioned, a word was said that was called desperate. And just being very clear, we are well-staffed. We just want to maintain that level of staffing without putting a burden on, and Chief, please correct me if I say something that's not correct, but freezing a police officer who may have to stay and work in a whole nother shift. And having them have the opportunities to do the detail work and basically protecting the public when we're doing road projects or other projects here in the city, whether it be for Eversource or ourselves. Ideally, the goal is to have a complement somewhere, and the chief and I agree that, you know, 120 would be amazing, but it's not achievable. So we're looking at a complement of somewhere around 116. We do have Chief 96 right now, police officers, and?
We have 98.
98.
That are currently, I call them street-ready. And we have 11 currently in the academy.
So I wanted to share that with everyone, too. We have 11 cadets in the academy now. And the academy is right here in Hoy Oak. So we're really thankful that the Western Mass Academy is available. And we're hopeful that all 11, all 11 would make it through the academy and achieve that goal, and then go into our rigorous, which is another 14 weeks of field training. So again, it takes a really long time. And if we can fast-track moving someone who's already been trained from another department into Chickaby, and give them an accelerated field training program of maybe two, three weeks, I would think was all they would need, just to get accustomed on how, how we do things in Chickaby, ideally, this would be a home run. So just wanted to let you know that we thought that this appropriation didn't need the approval, but we need to transfer it into, we thought we could take it out of the line items for patrolmen that were, again, under, underfilled in the last budget. But it needs to be a transfer that's approved by city council. So thank you for your consideration.
Mayor, before you go into the next order, I just want for notification, Channel 22, you're here to tape in audio, correct? Could I have a name, please?
I'm Ray.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
I'm Ray.
Thank you very much. You're all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sure. Counselor Pinaya Costello.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank Police Chief Major for this creative idea in establishing this special account. This will be a big help, I'm sure, as time goes by. And I just want you to know that coming down here, I saw two of your cruisers working very hard, patrolling the streets and stopping people. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief.
If I could add, I don't think it was brought up already, but part of the, the program is, is we request the five-year commitment to the police department. If somebody does transfer over and leave before that five years is up, then we require them to pay back the bonus they received. Another thing that I'd like to spell out, too, is this, it's not a new practice. Officers transfer amongst departments all the time. In recent years, we've seen a lot of officers that we've hired coming from central or even eastern Massachusetts. And while I'm always glad to have anyone that wants to work for the city, it does become a concern because sometimes the commute that they have to make gets a little bit too much for them. And when openings happen up on the other end of the state closer to home, they leave. That's, that's well-known throughout our business. As the mayor said, we're not desperate, but we're just looking to get a little extra help now.
Thanks.
Thank you again for your consideration.
Also present this evening is Councilor Derek Doboz, has attended the Mayor's briefing.
Mayor's Order 4. Order that the City Council accept the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration DER grant in the amount of $90,000 to provide additional funding for the support to Phase 1 construction activities for the Abbey Brook revitalization project. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. I know that our city planner, Lee Poulia, is here, and he's been spearheading this effort. And Lee, I want to thank you because I know Mass DER has already given us a grant, I believe it's $2 million for this project. And thank you for finding another $90,000. So again, a grant that we're accepting, this will be the removal of Bemis Pond's Dam, and, which has failed and needs to be removed. And also, the goal is to have some wonderful passive recreation in that particular area once complete. Anything you'd like to add, Lee?
No, Mayor. I would just add that DER is very impressed with this particular project, as shown through their financial commitment to seeing construction move forward. The DER reached out to us, saying that they had surplus funds in their budget that they wish to allocate to this project, under the context that we need to spend it by the end of the fiscal year. Based on our project schedule, we're confident that we can make that happen. And I would just like to acknowledge Councilors Pinaya Costello and Lopez for joining us on a site tour with staff from the DER a week or so ago. It was a great opportunity for the senior DER staff to tour our project site, all three phases, and have discussions about the future work that we're, we're looking to do with this project.
Any other questions? Sure. Counselor Pinaya Costello.
City Planner Poulia did a great job on the tour. It was a lot of fun. It was very informative. And the city on this project is definitely heading in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Poulia.
Counselor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Lee, for your hard work with this question. I know that we're, we're still flirting with the start date. Do we have a tentative start date, Lee, when this might be, actually, we start doing something up at Zott Park?
Yes and no. We have a, a recommendation out of our engineering consultant, Ty and Bond, on the contractor to contract with. So we're going to be working through contract documents over the next few weeks. What we're still waiting for is our final permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, which we have been told we can expect within the next three weeks. So tentatively, I'll say right now, we're looking at somewhere around June 1st.
Thank you very much. Sure. Counselor Lopez.
I would just like to say thank you for having us. I think it was really informational for me to be there. A lot of departments were there, not just the Chickaby City departments. So I think the information that we got from there would have taken a very long time to try to do at a council meeting. It was really good to tour it through. I will say that I am definitely not an outdoorsy-to-that-level kind of girl. I put sneakers on that day, but ticks somehow wanted to attack me. So.
They did.
Thank you personally for saving me from the ticks. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor.
We won't be harvesting ice from Bemis Pond anymore, so that's just letting.
That's correct.
Who know about that, that that's in the past.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Planner. And again, thank you for your consideration. We are on Mayor's Order 5. It's the appropriation of $9,373.80 to the following named account, building salary account for part-time deputy building commissioner from the available funds, and the building salary account for assistant building commissioner. I know that the building commissioner is here, Frank Boron. Frank, thanks for being here. And what's happened is we've given the building commissioner the opportunity to really revamp his department and modernize. And, and I think he's doing a tremendous job. And one of the things we want to do is make sure that our buildings are safe here in the city of Chickaby. And we are right now removing a local inspector. And what this will do is this is the compensation to get us to the end of the year for the part-time and deputy building commissioner, I believe, right? The deputy?
That's correct. That's correct.
Any questions about that with the, sure, President Laflamme?
Yeah, I actually had a meeting with Frank and regarding this because I had a little concerns about it. But I think this is a great idea because, as you know, there's a lot of legal stuff that has to get done and other things where Frank has to go to many of, as, as our commissioner and in charge of all our buildings, to these sites. So having someone in second in command, a deputy in charge, to take off some of his on his table, so that he's able to go and do what needs to be done in the administration part of it, I might say, is, is very, very lengthy. So having the second person for people to go to, as well as the city council to go to, it's a touch base for a second person. So I'm in favor of this tonight and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pinaya Costello.
Thank you also. I'm also in favor of this. You guys work very hard there. There's a lot of inspections.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Counselor Crochain.
Do you foresee this becoming a full-time position? Because I could see it becoming a full-time position for you.
So it's only a part-time position. We're still trying to hire an assistant building commissioner as we speak.
Right. Do you think it'll ever become full-time? Do you see that down the road, that the usefulness of this position for you and your department would be more better as a full-time?
It would be better if, if we could get it to be full-time. But right now, we're just asking for part-time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Labrie.
Yes, Frank, just a question on the salary, $9,300. Would that be going to somebody that's already on staff, or would that be for a brand-new person?
No, that's going for somebody already on staff.
Already on staff.
Yes, correct. Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for your consideration. We'll move on to Mayor's Order 6. It's the appropriation of $25,000 to the following named account, fire special account for ambulance billing from the available funds, and the undesignated free cash account. I don't see, is anyone here from the fire department? Well, Chief, stand by as I go to make it. I will explain. And really, what's happening is because of the success that we've had with our impact ambulance shifts, that we actually are, you have to bill more to get more. So we've been paying more as we receive more. So this is to supplement to get us to the end of the year. Any questions about Mayor's Order 6? Thank you for your consideration. Mayor's Order 7. Order that the City Council accept the anonymous donation in the amount of $25 to the Chickaby Fire Department. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Someone has generously donated a $25 to our fire department, and, and this is the process that we follow for all donations. They need to be, the donations approved by the City Council. Thank you for your consideration. Move on to Mayor's Order 8. Order that the City Council accept the list of donations in the amount of $150 to the Chickaby Parks Department. Said donations were in-kind snack and candy donations that were used for the Easter scavenger hunt held on April 1 at Dupont Middle School, and they are accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half. As you can see from the background information, we are looking at Mayor's Order 8. We had two donations, one from Big Y and one from Fruit Fair. And the reason why the event was held at Dupont is because it rained that morning. So it was an indoor event and a successful one. For all those who attended, and thank you for the Parks Department for all they do to bring those extracurricular activities and make them viable here in our community. Any questions about the donation? Thank you for your consideration. Oh, George, I'm sorry.
Yeah, excuse me, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt. Could we just have letters sent to the Big Y and Fruit Fair, please, for?
Could we just have letters sent to the Big Y and Fruit Fair, please, for thanking further donations? Thank you.
Sure thing. Do you want them sent on behalf of City Council or the Mayor's Office? What is your request? We usually send them as well? Okay.
Whatever's easiest.
It's best to give both.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So thank you for that, George. And again, thanks for your consideration. Mayor's Order Nine. Order that the City Council accept the award of two combination dynamic speed feedback and school zone speed limit sign assemblies from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to the City of Chicopee Department of Public Works. Said assemblies are accepted in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and 1/2. I know our City Engineer Doug Ellis is here, and again, it's no secret that Chicopee has implemented a program, and from an engineering standpoint, and also from a social standpoint, and from a policing standpoint, that we are not going to tolerate speeding in Chicopee. And I want to thank our City Engineer and the DPW team, our PEs have been working diligently to try to create creative ways to keep traffic at bay. And I want to thank Chief Major, because he's here as well for his team. You know, it's no secret, I tell everyone that I have the opportunity to speak to, if you speed in Chicopee, you'll probably get a ticket. And the goal is to have people abide by the law, and we want Chicopee to be a safe place for all. So Doug, we're excited to receive these two as a gift. I know we've been working with Mass dot pretty intimately, and anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, you know, the DOT was offering these signs. We applied for them, and obviously, we rewarded them. They're going to go over on Hamden Street at the Bowell Elementary School. We just have to sign a memorandum of agreement. They'll deliver the signs. They supply everything, right down to the precast concrete base. We just have to install them, provide them with some information, because they do take traffic data for a period of two years, and then we have the signs, and they'll be ours.
So you just mentioned that these things will have data. Would you be able to get that data if we have issues in that area for the City Council regarding issues if we needed it?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I don't think that would be any issue.
Could you look into that?
We, yeah, we were with the DOT, saying, hey, we need to use this for ourselves, too.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor LeBree. Mayor Beth, sorry, you?
Yes, Doug, not to get off the subject, but last year, I think Elizabeth had said that, Elizabeth, she said that we were going to get some new signs or some signs, speed indicator signs for, like, certain streets. Do you know anything about them coming in, or?
I'm not sure what the status of those are.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor LeBree, we can get that information and share it with the Council. Again, this is a campaign to make Chicopee safer. So we want to do everything in our power to do that.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Counselor Piniak Costello.
Thanks. Engineer Ellis, is it possible, I know this is an award of two, of dynamic speed feedback and the school zone speed limit sign, but is it possible in the future that we could add it to other schools? Is that on the horizon? Because this seems to be a great idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, and, you know, obviously, that's possible. You know, these were free signs that the DOT was offering, so I applied, and they awarded those to us. They were only offering two. I don't know if the city could ever get more through that program or not.
Okay. Well, two is better than none, but it'd be great if we...
Especially for three.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your consideration. We'll move on to Mayor's Order Ten. It's a Chapter Seven revisions. Be it ordained that Chapter Seven of the ordinance of the City of Chicopee as amended be and is hereby further amended as follows. Group One will be striking out, and this is the salaries for the City Council and for the school committee members. So I'll go through them quickly. President of the City Council, $13,000. City Councilors, 12 at $12,000. Vice Chairman of the School Committee at $6,500, and School Committee Members at $6,000. And insert in place thereof, President... Someone's receiving a call. Can you please...
Not Sue LaPlante, I think it's Tillotson.
No, he doesn't. Okay. That's gone. Thank you.
And again, we're striking out and then placing in place thereof, President of the City Council, $15,000 effective January 1st of 2024. This would take place after the election and after the swearing-in of the new representatives of the City Council and School Committee. City Councilors would be increased to $14,000. Vice Chairman of the School Committee would go to $8,000, and the School Committee Members at $7,500. And just for clarity, this ordinance would be effective 1/1/24, or in January, when the respective new positions are filled by elected officials. This was a request that came to my office from the City Council and the School Committee, and a pay parity study was done to look at other communities in the area, and this was the result. I think this has been brought to you, I think, maybe the third time. And just again, it was a request that was brought forward. I don't believe there's been a raise, or I'll call it an adjustment in salary for members of the City Council in over 14 years, if not 16 years. But a long time. Any questions about Mayor's Order Ten? Well, thank you for your consideration. Mayor's Order 11 is one of my favorites. We're here, notified that I have this day appointed. Stanley Kazakowski, as a member of the Anna E. Berry Elementary School Building Commission, to serve in such office for the term expiring on the completion of the project. I know that Principal Mr. Kazakowski is here, and I know that many of you know him. He is certainly well-recognized for his achievements and also his commitment to our school district. He served on the Chicopee Comprehensive Building Commission as well, and I'm thankful and honored to have him as my appointment to the Anna E. Berry Building Commission. So I'm hopeful that your esteemed counsel will take that under consideration. And thank you for being here, Stanley. Appreciate it. Mayor's Order 12 will be handled by City Council President Frank LaFlemy.
Mayor's Order 12. I just had it, I just put it, here we go. Order that the City Council accept a Community Development Block Grant Award in the amount of $7,500 to the Chicopee Council on Aging. Said grant is to be used for the technology lending program, and it is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Any questions? Seeing none, that will end the mayor. You want a few comments?
I do, I have a few. Just want to share quickly with you. First, I want to say thank you to the Chicopee Chamber of Commerce. I know that Melissa Briore is here. Briore? I think I finally got her name right, and I've been struggling with it. So Melissa, thank you for being here. They did their clean sweep where they partnered on last Saturday with the Cultural Council, and we really partnered with them as a city, as DPW, in kicking off our Clean City Initiative, which isn't a one-day event. So the city has embarked on an initiative. My administration is focused on being one of the cleanest cities, if not the cleanest in Western Mass, and it's not going to be an easy task. I'm going to need the help of this community. I'm reaching out to students from kindergarten to high school age, seniors, asking them to take a pledge to never, ever litter, and most of them have done that. I've had one student that said he just can't trust himself to make the pledge, so I think we're doing really well with that pledge. And I'll say that this was really a reset, so I want to thank, we were able to pick up close to 100 bags, if not 100, bags of trash and 40 tires throughout the city in different areas, and thank you for putting that effort together. And just want to let you know that you'll see the signs now that I'm talking about it and what our brand and logo is about. So it is a Clean City Initiative. You'll see that the logo was created by students from St. Joan of Arc. They did a tremendous job. We've tweaked it a little bit to put City Hall on there and a sycamore leaf, but it's really about throwing the trash into the bin and recycling anything you can. We want to keep as much waste out of the landfill. Frankly, we're here for a finite amount of time, and let's protect this planet for future generations is really what I think is our goal. And also, who wants to look at trash and rubbish on the ground? So the goal is, like I said, to clean our city. It's going to take a group effort, and collectively, I think we can be successful. And lastly, our slogan is something that I hope is catchy. It's the Clean City Initiative and Stop the Drop. That was a slogan that was created by one of our students at Litwin School. Very creative. I think it's very catchy. It's something we can even chant, but let's stop the drop of litter in Chicopee, and let's work together to have one of the cleanest cities and something we can all be proud of. And I'll just caveat briefly, because I know I talk too much, Frank, so we do have a new facilities director who's really focused on having our buildings, the municipal-owned property, be the leaders by example. And I'm hopeful that's a domino effect throughout every community, through every neighborhood, that you'll see a significant improvement when it comes to basically trash and litter, overgrowth, those types of things. And I know it's contagious when certain neighbors do improvements to their property. Hopefully, others on the street will do the same. But no one wants to walk out their door. I don't care if you own or lease or rent, or own a business or a stakeholder in some way, shape, or form, no one wants to look at trash on the ground. So I think collectively, if we work together, we can make Chicopee, like I said, the cleanest city in Western Mass. I'd like to take a moment to thank Deputy Chief Jeffrey Garin, who retired last week. He's 35 years of service of protecting this city, committed in all ways, shapes, and form, certainly a man of character, and we wish him well in his retirement. I also want to take a moment to recognize that it is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we'll be raising the flag in front of City Hall on May 9th at 10:00 a.m. for anyone who'd like to join us. Certainly, mental health awareness is something that we want to make sure people understand and how it impacts people's lives, and we want to help support that effort here in the city of Chicopee. Today is Teacher Appreciation Day. I want to say thank you to all of our teachers and all their support staff. They do a tremendous job on educating our future. So thank you for what you do. And lastly, it's an unfortunate occurrence, but our HR Director, just letting you know, Paul Winspear, will be leaving in two weeks. He's given his notice, and we are putting together right now a transition plan, and we're going to weather the storm and get out there and look for a new HR Director. So I wanted to share that with everyone, and I wish Paul the best in his new endeavor. And that's all I have, and thank you, and have a great meeting.
Thank you. That'll end the mayor's briefing. Roll call, please.
President LaFlemy.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zierowsky.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Balik here.
Yes.
Crumpet.
Yes.
Dobos.
Yes.
Corchane.
Yes.
LeBree.
Yes.
Piniak Costello.[1777.36]